Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, the showering thing is challenging. You need to...
I agree. And love it.
Is everybody comfortable? Would they like to sit down? Marty, come on up here. Come on up here. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you so much for coming. This is Concerned Residents Against Airport Pollution. It's a project of Marty Rubin since 2003, so this is its 10th year. And this is the fifth anniversary of its candidates forum. And you can see, all the candidates are here, except I understand Tony Vasquez is still filming on TV and will be here right alone. And hopefully Terrence as well. Thank you so much for coming. You know, I just want to say a word about Marty, because he very seldom talks about himself. You know, he really has been, he and his wife of 30 years, Joan over here, they're the real deal. They have been at this without pay, good days and bad days, with public opinion and sometimes against public opinion, to try to end pollution from Santa Monica's and Marvista's largest single source of pollution, the airport. So I think that we all ought to start out by first of all recognizing Marty and Joan and the wonderful job they've done. Marty, take it away.
Thank you. Can you hear me, everybody? Great. Thank you all for coming. And I'd like to thank the Equity Office for the use of this beautiful space. I want to thank the Marvista Community Council for the use of their sound system and for the help setting up tonight's forum. And thanking Councilman Bill Rosendahl and his staff for supplying us with the tables, chairs, and the selector. People that parked in the lot, you need to have one of these to get out without paying. Does everybody have done that? Otherwise, they're up at the front there, and you could pay for it. And then announce the restroom, get it up on the second floor. Go out the elevator, make a right, and a right down the hallway. The first floor one, they're fixing up. So, okay. I want to thank the many hundreds from Santa Monica Airport's surrounding communities in both Santa Monica and Los Angeles for their participation with Concerned Residents Against Airport Pollution over the years. It has proven to be a long and interesting road. As Jonathan Stein pointed out, sharing the leadership role with me has been my wife, Joan. And it's not common for two to be in such synchronization when deciding to work as political activists on an issue. However, we both strongly believe the Santa Monica Airport issue is far and has been critical for far too many years. Joan and I certainly appreciate how valuable all the local activists have been over the years by volunteering their time in a most civil fashion in order to have community concerns considered, understood, and addressed. Eight years ago to today, on September 13, 2004, Concerned Residents held our first Santa Monica City Council Candidates Forum. Moderating was Bill Rosendahl, then a well-known cable show journalist and candidate for Los Angeles City Council's new 11th district that, as Bill says, embraces Santa Monica. For those who might not know, Bill Rosendahl has recently been diagnosed with cancer. It certainly appears that his radiation treatments and chemotherapy sessions are being effective, and he is fighting the cancer very well. He actually went downtown to the city council a few days ago, and God bless him. He is energized by the many positive, loving thoughts he's received. Also speaking at our 2004 Candidates Forum was Mike Gordon, candidate for California State Assembly. Mike was instrumental in fast-tracking the South Coast Air Quality Management District to do a study about the air pollution from Santa Monica Airport, and I being part of the study's planning committee. However, while Mike was getting situated in Sacramento, he was diagnosed with a brain tumor and tragically succumbed to complications from it. I would like to dedicate this forum tonight in memory of Mike Gordon. Elected to fill Mike Gordon's seat was Ted Lew. Ted, now a California State Senator, has proven to be, like Bill Rosendahl, diligent and tenacious throughout their political careers in their efforts to shed light on and to find pathways leading to remedies for our critical community concerns regarding Santa Monica Airport. Speaking of community concerns, let's begin our forum. We are pleased to have, and I have two question marks here, candidates here tonight. And I think we have all but one. Terrence?
Two.
Two.
Tony?
Three.
Tony should come later, you said.
Okay, well, we have, usually we do get on this talk. So I'd like to begin and have the candidates give a brief introduction of themselves. I'm thinking on the order of 30 seconds, just to introduce yourself. One of the problems with having so many candidates is that every single question takes a good chunk of time. And we do have five questions that we want to get through tonight. Okay, so we're sharing microphones, and also, just before that the questions, if they seem a little overwhelming, just answer what you can. You know, I mean, I've been at this for years, and I know some of this stuff is challenging. But I think people want to understand what the candidates' knowledge is and everything, so I also would like to suggest that be succinct, and let's roll through these things in a way that we can maximize the input. So we'll begin with John Mann and work away around the introduction.
Is this on?
It should be.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, Jonathan Mann. I come from a varied background. I've lived in Santa Monica since the '70s, and I was parole agent, probation officer...
Billy, why don't you check that? Check that.
Oh, there we go. All right, I have a varied background. I used to be a probation officer and a parole agent, a schoolteacher, a flight attendant supervisor, mediator. And during that time, I've lived in Santa Monica, and before that, I was in Venice. I lost my AFA endorsement when they found out that I wanted to close the airport, the Association of Flight Attendants. And I'm now endorsed just by the Green Party so far, Los Angeles County Greens. I lived in Sunset Park from 1999 to 2004, and I was right under the traffic pattern. And now I live in Ocean Park, and I'm right under the traffic pattern. They changed it, so it seems to be following me. But I've been the first candidate to come out years ago to close down the airport, and I'm glad to see there's a lot more people that are supporting that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gleam Davis. I'm the current mayor pro tem in Santa Monica. I've been on the city council since 2009, and before that, I was on the Planning Commission. I've lived in Santa Monica for 26 years. I've lived in Ocean Park, the Willmont neighborhood. I currently live north of Montana. I'm one of those people who is very familiar with the airport from my time in Ocean Park, but also because my son attended the Marine Park Child Development Center. So for five years of his life, he actually went to school under the glide path of the airport. I think that the airport, and I'm an attorney, I should warn you about that, I think that the airport presents a tremendous challenge to the community. It has a long and checkered history in the community, and it's obviously been the center of quite a bit of legal attention. As you all know, we've had several pieces of litigation involving the airport, and so far, we've been unable to leverage that litigation into meaningful change. But with 2015 fast approaching, we'll hopefully be able to change that, and I look forward to a lively discussion between now and 2015 about the airport and how we should approach the problem. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much to Marty Rubin and Joan Rubin for putting this on, and for the Equity Office for hosting this. I live in Santa Monica in the Ocean Park area. I could hear the planes, all the people around there. It's horrible. I know about the pollution, the safety issues. I saw a plane crash just a couple blocks from me near Fourth and Pico, and the pilot was killed day after Thanksgiving a number of years ago. It was terrible. That risk is always here. This is not a place for the airport. I really believe that the four council members that you're going to vote is crucial, especially this year, because they will be the ones that decide about the airport in the 2015 year when the agreement expires, the 1984 agreement. So make your choices wisely, really think about it, and I personally feel this is probably the number-one issue in Santa Monica encompassed in so many things. As a longtime environmental activist, we all have to do the right thing to protect people's health. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ted Winter. Thank you for coming out. I currently serve on the City of Santa Monica's Plan Commission, and previously was a Recreation and Park Commissioner. I've also been the president of the Ocean Park Association. I live in Ocean Park on Ozone Street, right up against the Venice border, directly under the flight path, with my two young children, extremely cognizant of both the health and safety risks posed by the Santa Monica Airport. When I first ran for city council in 2008, I advocated for closing the airport. I continue to advocate for closing the airport, and while we attempt to close it, severely restricting its operations and impacts.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Turn it on. Hi, my name is Bob Selden. I live in the northeast section of Santa Monica, near 26th and Wilshire. When I first moved to LA, I lived in West Los Angeles, near Olympic and Berry, and a fellow named Tom Donovan and I formed the West Side Residents Association that successfully stopped some high rises from going up along Olympic between Federal and Berry in that area, which is why today there is a gap in the high rises over there.
Nowhere, please.
A little closer? Okay. I'm a practicing attorney. I have a degree in engineering. I was an engineer before I was an attorney, so I feel confident I can read and understand legal documents, I can read and understand technical documents. And I was a judge pro tem in the courts in Santa Monica, LA, and Beverly Hills for about 10 years, and so I'm used to making decisions. I co-founded and chaired Northeast Neighbors, which was one of, is today one of Santa Monica's neighborhood associations. And during that time, we were able to get a couple of improvements. We were able to get some downzoning in our neighborhood, and we also were able to put up a traffic circle that exists today at Washington and 26th Street instead of some stop signs. I'm glad to see you're all doing this. I think citizens can really make a big difference. When I first moved to Santa Monica, I was active in Save the Beach Movement, which put an initiative on the ballot that stopped hotel beaches from being constructed and saved a community beach...
All right, I'm going to butt in here, because I asked Kathy to make it 30 seconds, and we're allowing leeway, but I'm knocking off the airport issues a hundred percent.
Fair enough.
Hundred percent focused on airport issues.
Well, I guess, okay, the point I'm making is that if I'm elected, I agree with Ted that the airport should be closed, or at least severely limited in its operations, and I support you folks 1,000 percent.
Good evening. Hi, my name is John C. Smith. I'm a teacher at Santa Monica College and USC. Three months ago, I left my job at NBC4. I was an Emmy Award-winning producer to run for office. The first words I wrote when I came home that day to start building my webpage were these: Every issue comes down to people, people like you. Most politicians don't understand that. I do. I believe in one thing, the number-one overriding priority with regards to SMO. I think that we have to make sure that we ensure the health and the safety of the people and families that live closest to the airport. I think that's most important. I also want the residents of Santa Monica to be able to decide the future of the airport, not the FAA, and I would always fight to make sure that we get to decide what becomes of the airport, whether it's a limited airport or complete closure. And I also want to make sure that our city attorney has all the powers that they need to fight for, defend that right. Thank you very much.
My name is Richard McKinnon, and I'm a Planning Commissioner of the city, previously a Parks and Recreation Commissioner. And in my private life, my occupation is to help governments, business, and organization make big decisions in areas like public hospitals, healthcare, and public transit. And this airport makes no sense. It's a relic of an industrial past, and like many other things, its business is slowly dying. So the issues now fall into three separate areas. One, what we do until 2015: terminate leases, begin the process of advising we're going to stop selling aviation fuel, stop the subsidization. In 2015, we can affect all those things and claim back the western end of this airport for Santa Monica and begin to turn it into other, better, higher purposes, including parks and recreation. And then we set ourselves up for what will be the great fight to get rid of the airport completely.
I'm going to interrupt one more time here. In the questions, you're actually answering some of the questions now. And, you know, I basically just wanted to say, my name is, and I'm running for the city council because, and blah, blah, and then save all what you're saying for the questions. Now, now it's going to be like repetitious, and we'll just cut, maybe cut back the time on the questions. I mean, I hate to change in midstream, but there will be opportunity to say those things in the questions. Okay, go ahead.
Well, with that introduction, I am Steve Duran, and I will say this. I am an attorney. I have two small children, a three-year-old and a one-year-old. We live very close to Mr. Winterer, just a couple blocks away, also in Ocean Park. And this really comes down to two points. Either you're going to do something to try and keep the airport open, or you want to close it. And I'll just leave you with this. We can talk about details later. I want to close the Santa Monica Airport.
Hi, my name's Frank Gruber. I actually moved into the flight path before I moved into Santa Monica, because I moved into Venice in 1978 and into Ocean Park and onto Raymond Avenue in '83. I've lived on Marine Street. When I lived on Marine Street and Raymond, I knew that phone number for the noise complaints by heart. Then I moved over to Beverly Avenue on the northern part. I don't have as much time to call there, but I know you guys who live even closer really get hit hard by this. The, yeah, I've been a resident of Santa Monica. In the '90s, I was on the Housing and the Planning Commission. Starting in 2000, I started writing a weekly column about Santa Monica. And I just want to point out that in 2007, I wrote a column, and these is out, there's a flyer out there you can get with some of my columns, and I wrote about the airport. It has to go as soon as possible. That was in 2007. And I wrote a lot since then, and I think we'll discuss more about that later tonight, how to do it.
Hi. Hello. My name is Armin Melkonian, and I'm a civil and environmental engineer. My wife always complains that I have a really bad sense of smell, but I think on the way over here, when I got close, I did smell some avgas, so I do support closing the airport, and I'll leave it at that until we answer the questions. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sherri Davis, and I am a longtime community activist in Santa Monica. I first lived on Ozone Street also. I think Ocean Park is a popular neighborhood. I have so much respect for the amount of work that's gone into all of your advocacy. I can relate to how much you've put into it, but I'm going to be perhaps the only one here tonight to say that I have not yet made up my mind about the airport. And I have a lot to learn, and I'm going to stay very open-minded and keep listening and keep learning. And I look forward to a dialogue as we go forward. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to go to the questions.
I'm going to step over here, so Marty can see me at least.
It's on, right?
So, hi, everyone. I'm Terry O'Day, and I am your newest council member. I've been serving on the council since February of 2010, was re-elected in November 2010, and also the youngest member of the council and the first member from the Pico neighborhood. I have made a career of solving environmental problems, both in business and in nonprofits, now in a public role, finding solutions and at times forcing those solutions to happen, particularly by funding litigation against polluters. It's how I earned this tattoo, among other things. And I am a Concerned Resident Against Airport Pollution and look forward to this next term, which I think is the opportunity to really make some changes happen at the airport.
All right, you can bounce back now. Tony? Tony? Just, oh. Terrence later. Okay. Terrence, did you get to introduce yourselves yet?
No, but I think everybody knows me.
No, go ahead. Terrence.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for taking your time to come out tonight to hear everybody's point of view. I was born, I think I'm the only candidate that was born and raised in Santa Monica, and I've seen many families that grew up through McDonnell Douglas and that built their lives around this airport. I agree with Sherri that I think there's a lot to be learned, and there's a lot of negotiation to be dealt with. My main issue is that in the event of a natural disaster, that this is one of the only points that they're going to be able to get our equipment in and people out of here. So I'm, but my heart's open to every one of you, and so is my ears and my mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Tony Vasquez, you want to introduce yourself? And it looks like we have all 15 candidates here. Thank you all for understanding the importance of the issue.
Sir. Thanks. You're not on. Oh. Switch on the talk.
Hello, Tess, can you hear me? Okay. So how much time do I have? It's like, 30 seconds. 30 seconds, okay. My name is Tony Vasquez, and I'm a homeowner in Sunset Park. I've been in Santa Monica, or I should say, my family's been in Santa Monica since early '50s. I've been a homeowner since the '84, and as a kid, we used to play right across the street here when it was McDonnell Douglas back in the day, in the '60s. For those of you that don't remember, this, where we're sitting now, used to be McDonnell Douglas. And as a result of that, I've actually grown somewhat attached to this area, but as a homeowner and in the flight pattern of the airport now, I am very concerned about this, the airport, the way it's been moving. It's, in my opinion, it's no longer a recreational airport, it's a corporate airport. And as a result of that, we're seeing more and more jets fly out of there, and luckily, we haven't had a crash from a jet. It's mostly been the regular airplanes, the propeller ones, but hopefully that never does happen. But I am very concerned now that the 2015 agreement is coming up in 2015, and I'd love to be on the city council to be able to address that issue as it comes up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I want to reiterate what my brother, and yes, it's my brother, same last name, what he brought up a little bit, and I think it's crucial to understand that the four candidates, the four candidates from the 15 up here that are elected will be on the council in 2015, along with the three that are elected two years from now, that will determine the direction that the city of Santa Monica is going to have with regard to Santa Monica Airport. So politically, we're in a unique time. Okay, question one is regarding your knowledge of Santa Monica Airport issues. Over the past several years, there have been several scientific studies about Santa Monica Airport's environmental impact. There have also been several local forums and presentations regarding these studies, as well as California Senator Ted Lew's Senate Select Committee on Air Quality hearing that was held locally November 2011. This is multi-part, they sort of tie in with each other, so answer it. By the way, these candidates, the candidates only got these questions when they arrived tonight. They're sitting there waiting for them. In fact, they're only finished a little earlier today. It's not easy getting these together. But the community, they put in all of our email contacts, sent in questions, and we put together the best we could in the time allotted, these questions. So with that part of that, have you attended any of these forums or airport commission meetings? On what do you base your knowledge regarding Santa Monica Airport? In what way have you educated yourself on the critical public health concerns from Santa Monica Airport? Are you familiar with proprietary powers, and that Santa Monica can exercise them to protect airport neighbors from environmental hazards? Do you support an indirect source review rule regulating air pollution emissions originating from activities at Santa Monica Airport? That one is a little, I sent out material, a letter with regard to that, but if the candidates were able to review that and weigh in on it, it'd be great. And lastly, since Santa Monica owns and operates Santa Monica Airport, what would you propose to do before 2015 to address public health concerns regarding toxic jet emissions and lead in aviation gasoline at SMO? And that's not to make light of, the noise impacts are also a health concern. Okay, we're going to go with a minute and a half. That's okay, because it's an intertwined question. I think it's good. Thank you. All right. Does anybody want to take the lead? I don't say it. Does anybody have something? Okay, John and Gleam.
Well, like I said before, I was the first candidate to propose closing down the airport, and everybody thought I was crazy. I'm really gratified to see all these candidates, except for two, who are fairly strong against closing the airport. I've gotten a lot of information through the media about the airport lately, so it's becoming a bigger issue, and I give myself credit for that, for some of that. I want to thank Xena Julesis, because she's been very, very, working very hard at this. And I don't think she's been recognized enough for what she's done. I've been to some of her meetings, friends of Sunset Park, when I lived in Sunset Park, and I really, really want to applaud her. She's the greatest. Let's see, what else do we have here? I support all, anything that's going to close the airport down or regulate air pollution. I think we have to be much, much, much more aggressive in litigation against the FAA. We can't let them roll us over. We can't let them intimidate us, because a lot of people really think that the FAA can, you know, just run over the Santa Monica Council. I'm concerned about some of the members of the council right now that aren't running for reelection, and they'll be running eventually, and we need to get them out of there as soon as we can, because they're not, it's easy to say I support closing the airport, but when push comes to shove, it doesn't happen. And I've heard these promises before.
I'm going to follow John's lead and stand up. I'm a little more comfortable standing up, and I can see people better. I'm Gleam Davis again. Yes, I have attended the meetings. I attended the meeting down...
can, because they're not, it's easy to say I support closing the airport, but when push comes to shove, it doesn't happen. And I've heard these promises before.
I'm going to follow John's lead and stand up. I'm a little more comfortable standing up and I can see people better. I'm Gleam Davis again. Yes, I have attended the meetings. I attended the meeting down on National Boulevard at the church that Marty sponsored with the results of the UCLA research relating to the health effects of the airport. I was not able to attend Senator Lou's forum, but I actually have spoken extensively with Senator Lou about this and I very much support his mission to try and measure the effects of lead near airports, since there are some studies now that show that people who live near the airports, unfortunately, especially children, have elevated lead levels in their blood. I have a lot of knowledge regarding the airport, having been on the council. This issue's come up before us many times and it's a constant topic at city council meetings. I also, of course, read all the local literature. I think I'm on every email list, including Marty's. And so I keep track that way. In terms of the proprietary powers, I know that's an issue that our airport commission is very concerned about. And I think the city has some very strong proprietary rights arguments to make regarding its control of the airport. The question becomes, when is the right time to make those arguments? If we make them now, do we run some risks or do we wait till 2015, where we maybe haven't risked them in litigation and in 2015 use them as a method to close down the airport? The indirect source review rule, it's a California Air Resources Board rule, and of course, we should always try and look at all sources of pollution. I'm the one, when the last time we discussed the airport and we were discussing issues surrounding the airport, that made the motion to add the health effect of the airport to what we were going to continue to study. So I think the health effects are one of those things that will give us leverage in our fight to close the airport.
Do you have any proposals on what to do before 2015 to address public health concerns regarding toxic jet emissions? You spoke about the av gas, the lead and av gas.
Well, the lead and av gas is a tough one. I know they're doing some studies now about unleaded av gas, but there are some operational changes we can make with regards to the jets, to try and get them to do, for example, less idling, which would reduce their emissions. We just need to make sure that we have the legal foundation for doing so. But I also think that by proving that there is an environmental impact from that, we will be making a better record for any legal fight that might come down the road.
Who next is Val? Jerry?
Is everyone going to answer with Marty or is it...
Not necessarily. If anybody wants to pass on any question, that would be fine.
Thank you very much. Yes, I've attended many airport commission meetings, numerous events. I base my knowledge regarding Santa Monica Airport on many things. Gleam said him, a lot of reading, a lot of going to meetings, and being Marty's brother, I think that qualifies me. I educate myself by getting out there. I educated myself by going out and smelling the pollution there and how horrible it is. And I urge everybody to do that. It's very real. The proprietary powers, yes, I think there are things Santa Monica can do and I would suggest we do them sooner rather than later. The indirect source review, I support it. And since Santa Monica owns and operates Santa Monica Airport, what I'd like to propose is, in the area of education, I think there needs to be more town hall forums. They had the airport visioning process, but I thought it was somewhat myopic, that visioning process. It was only, dealt with half of the issues and a lot more is yet to come. And we should start that and educate people and have town hall forums about the dangers of what the pollution can do to people's health. We need to have experts there and the city should even be sponsoring such an educational forum. Thank you.
Okay. Tony Vasquez.
Thank you, Jerry. Do you want to use that?
Oh, sure. Thanks, Terry. I want to take your mic. I think you can hear me with one. My name is Tony Vasquez again. And actually, when I was on the city council, I was the liaison to the airport commission when we still had liaisons. I understand they eliminated that now. But I think we need to bring that back, because I think the council needs to be more in touch with what's going on with these commissions. And as a resident and in the flight pattern, if elected, I'll be the only one who lives in Sunset Park on that city council. And I think that's very important for you to consider as you move forward, because I have a lap pool in my backyard and every week when I'm out there, even though I have pull service, I always see this little black layer of suds just from the lead from the jet fuel. Because, you know, I don't know if you notice this, but when they're landing, they release whatever they have in their tank before they land. So they're not landing with a full tank of gas. And it's my understanding that this lead that's in the jet fuel is illegal for cars, but not for jets. So it's beyond me why we haven't stopped selling jet fuel. One of the proposals I would propose if I got on the council is that we do not have to sell jet fuel at this airport. And we need to eliminate it. Because I think, whatever, we're doing too much to encourage jets to land here. We should make it very inconvenient for jets to land here. And by doing so, hopefully, will not only eliminate those trips, but hopefully eliminate jets altogether from even landing it or taking off from Santa Monica Airport.
You might as well just go right down the row, right?
That'd be fine, John. Thank you.
You know, in television, we used to have a microphone for everybody, but that's okay. I'm just going to go down the list. Yes, I have attended airport commission meetings, maybe not as long or as many as some of you, but I've been active in trying to learn as much as I can about the airport. My knowledge, I'm a news person. I've been a news person for the last 25 years. Every day, I read several newspapers or go to websites, particularly in the last year or so, you know, The Patch, the Santa Monica Daily Press, The Mirror. In what ways have I educated myself on public health issues? I actually arranged, through a reporter friend of mine, he actually got me inside the airport to where a lot of people never really get to go. I went behind the restricted areas, took a nice little slow drive, got out at the west end of the airport. It is surprising how close the homes are at the west end of the airport. It was pretty shocking. It's one thing to drive by the airport and see the distance, it's another thing to see from the plane's point of view, how close they are to the homes. We, you know, I saw where they fuel all the jets, where the jets sit there and idle for, you know, in this case, it was like five minutes, the jets just sitting there, idling before it took off. That really was impressive to me. Some of the things that we could do right now, I'm interested in what the airport commission has recommended to the city council. Maybe there's a way to enact some of these four rules to actually reduce the number of flights right now and not wait till 2015. I know there's a possibility of a legal challenge, but I think the FAA is going to sue us anyway, so I'd rather have the flights less stopped now than later. Thank you.
Yeah. Just going through the questions in order. Have I attended any of the forums? No, I have not, but I have attended airport commission meetings. The last one I went to was in May. I spoke at it. That was the one that was reviewing the current airport visioning process, which has been a great disappointment to many people in this room and throughout the city. What do I base my knowledge regarding Santa Monica Airport? You know, if you're on the email distribution list for this organization, for Friends of Sunset Park and for CASMAT, you can just sit at home and read your email and learn an awful lot about the airport. More than you might ever want to know. I've also, you know, not been able to attend Ocean Park Association meetings as much as I'd like in the last year, but I've made a point of attending the two, which discuss the airport, and learned an awful lot from John Fairweather's presentation on the flight schools and why they contribute to 60% of our airport traffic. I applaud him for the hard work he's done on that matter. I am, yes, familiar with the proprietary powers that the Santa Monica has and if we, I believe if we apply them in a nondiscriminatory manner, then we are able to exercise those rights. I support the indirect source review rule and to address some of the impacts, the healthy impacts prior to 2015, the things we can do are just clearly to limit flight operations. We can do that by imposing landing fees on all users, including the flight schools, so that they have an economic incentive not to operate as frequently. We can look at a flight operations reduction rule, we can ask everybody who flies out of the airport to carry toxic torque liability insurance and add to their costs, and we can look at non-addition rules. And then hopefully in 2015, we can make even greater changes.
How do I make up for my long-winded introduction and simply say I agree with Ted and Richard and Tony on everything they've said? And I would say it, but it'd be redundant. The thing that I've noticed in my neighborhood in northeast Santa Monica is we're getting a lot of low-flying aircraft and low-flying helicopters and it's incredibly noisy. We're sharing some of the same problems you are. But I have to say, I'm shocked when I come down to your neighborhood and I hear those jets taking off. I don't think most people in Santa Monica understand what's going on at the airport. And that's got to be brought home to them. And that's part of what we ought to be doing between now and 2015, is education, get people to come to the neighborhood association meetings. I don't know if you have sound recordings or video of this stuff. Nobody knows this is going on. Now, with respect to the emissions, these planes that are taking off are at full power and they're spewing. The fact that they're not idling as much on the runway, to me, is secondary. It's when they come over your yard and the way the stuff gets dispersed over the city that's highly problematic. And for many years now, I've been an electric vehicle advocate and driver and we have the same problems, because we get into the exhaust from automobiles, which isn't quite as bad, because in automobiles, you have catalytic converters and other exhaust technologies at work, which planes don't have. And so when you get into these micro particles that you folks are breathing, there's heavy metals and things in those micro particles. It's not just carbon. And so, you know, people have to be educated about this. And I think in the meantime, we should be educating the residents and gathering all of our studies and doing what Marty's been doing so effectively, because you folks will avalanche into success at this rate. Thank you.
Anyone?
Yes, I'm ready to go.
Richard, then Terry.
So 20 years ago...
By the way, I have a question in the back. Say your name before you start speaking. Thank you.
Richard McKinnon. And 20 years ago, a new airport runway was installed in a major airport in one of the states. And we were asked to assess it. It was put in by the federal government. Well, it turned out that the airport contributed a huge amount of environmental damage with noise, particle emission, and a sense of disaster to the people who lived anywhere near the airport. That's been known for the last 20, 30, 40 years. And what we see replicated here is that disaster in your neighborhood. And the issue that you're all focused on now is how to stop it. And so the strategic move forward is widely known. The airport commission has recommended its recommendations and added to them sequentially. They're very sensible, they're well-based. They articulate all the things that Ted and others have been talking about and they provide us for a basis for going forward. And I would seek to implement those decisions and those recommendations. And we would then have a comprehensive approach from a council arena and a council level to solving this problem. And so my commitment is to endorse and implement the airport commission recommendations that comprehensively solve this problem for this area.
Steve Duran, you want to go next, Terry? Name first.
Thank you. I'm Steve Duran. And just to, I guess, remind everybody what the questions were, there's been so many of us, I'll just read them as we go. Have you attended any of these forums or airport commission meetings? Well, I've attended airport commission meetings. In fact, at the last one, I spoke and I hope, hopefully, I was persuasive in having the commission deny a person who wanted to start a commercial airflight business, giving tours of the Santa Monica Pier, the Santa Monica Hills, going over to Hollywood. And that was at the last commission meeting. What do I base my knowledge regarding the Santa Monica Airport? The internet has been a great resource. Friends and neighbors who have helped to educate me on the issues of the airport, it's very complicated and there's a lot of history to it, but I've used those resources. In what way, no, I answered that one. Are you familiar with proprietary powers that Santa Monica can exercise to protect the airport neighbors from environmental hazards? I think that this begs another question. The people of Santa Monica have already spoken about the issues at the airport. There were two independent surveys. Both of them with the results that indicated 80% of those surveyed were dissatisfied with the airport and its current operations. 45% of those said they wanted to close it. So my question is, why hasn't the city done more to use its proprietary powers to make those changes? The next question is, do you support an indirect source review rule? Yes, I believe we need to pull every resource we can to build our fight. We can't believe that in 2015, the FAA is going to, you know, turn over the keys, say thank you very much and walk away. It's going to be a fight and we need to get every resource we can to prepare for that fight.
Hi, Frank Gruber. I got most of my knowledge of the airport from the research I did for the columns I wrote about it. But oddly enough, I want to say that as bad as the air pollution is and as horrible as it affects you, even if there was no pollution, I would want to close the airport. So to me, the process issues about how to make that happen are the most important issues. And this is where we get into this proprietary rights and stuff like that. My feeling is that we're running, we're in the kind of opening skirmishes of a war. Now, in my day job, I'm an entertainment lawyer. You might think that has nothing to do with, it doesn't have that much to do, to tell you the truth, with running the city. But it does have a lot to do with how you litigate and how you negotiate. Because in the entertainment business, all we do is negotiate and if the negotiations don't work, we litigate. And so what I want to say is that going up, we're going to have this fight with the FAA. We have to have this fight. But we also have a kind of, we have to give the right messages. The messages, the right message to staff, the right message to the fixed base operators, particularly the lessees who are doing the, you know, the flight schools and stuff like that. And we have to push as much as we can and to let them know that we're just chomping at the bit, to take back that western portion. Now, what I want to say is, I think we also have to think creatively. With the leaseholds for the next two years, it's unbearable to think that even two or three more years of 60% of the flights coming from the, I'll just wrap up, from the flight schools. I think we can be creative in, that land is valuable to us if we get it back. We can lease it out for much more to other uses. We can put a lot of pressure on them through the efforts that the commission has identified, but we can also say, let us buy you out, because there's value for us at the end if we do it. I don't know, I haven't, you know, I'm not a, I haven't negotiated, fine, okay. That's all I'll say. I don't want to give away all my negotiating.
Have you attended any of the airport commission meetings? No, I have not. On what do you base your knowledge regarding the Santa Monica Airport? I'm also on the email lists from Grab and I do a lot of reading on the internet and as well, I'm an engineer. My wife's family, I've only been actually living in Santa Monica for one year. I recently got married to my wife about a year ago, moved to Santa Monica. But she was living in Santa Monica with her family in the Ocean Park District for 20 years and I dated her for 14 years prior to getting married, so. I think the real issues are going to be, I do support the, of course, all of the environmental issues, but I think that the real issues are going to be, what this group and what the residents are seeing is that city staff and city council is kind of reluctant to act. There's the direction that's coming from them and the verbiage that's coming from them is kind of anti-closing the airport down. I think that's the sense. I'm not afraid of a fight. I think that we should start the fight earlier rather than later and try to close the airport down.
I'll be brief. I just want to add, I'm Sherry Davis and, thank you, Terry. I look forward to hearing what Terry has to say. But of course, we all have to be concerned about the health effects, especially of the lead. And one of the opportunities I think we have is to really play a role as such an activist, progressive city, to look for solutions to de-letting the av gas. And that's a way that we can really serve as a catalyst for the better health of everyone who is ever near an airport. And that's one of the concerns I have about our position of wanting to close down this airport. If we're going to close down the airport, we're not going to stop the flights, they're going to go somewhere else. So we're pushing our problems onto another community and I'm concerned about that. And I want, so let's look for some good solutions for figuring out the problems that the airport creates. the airport creates.
Once again, I'm Terry O'Day. I'm a council member, and I have attended Airport Commission meetings, and the experience of my career is what I base my knowledge of the airport, of Santa Monica Airport on. I'm learning about the airport all the time, like Ted Winter, from the emails that we get, there are a lot, and from the city staff, and from community meetings and discussions that we have with neighbors, and I'll come back to that. And I am familiar with the proprietary powers that the city does have. In fact, it is that familiarity that earned me this endorsement, I think, in previous council elections. I funded, as an environmental activist, the NRDC and the Coalition for Clean Air's lawsuits against the ports of LA that relied on the proprietary powers at the ports to curb air pollution at the ports, and in fact, went into funding aviation pollution studies, including efforts to get lead out of aviation gas. Right now, our proprietary powers are limited by the 84 contract, and I think that ideas for what we can do now would be increasing landing fees, which is a study that we have going and will be looking at in the spring this year, in controlling, operating, taxing, and idling. I know there are a lot of new ideas that are coming out of the community that I think we can look at, but really what we're talking about here is a play for 2015, and that's the opportunity that we're facing here with the new term of the city council. And change of this type only happens with activism in the community. And this question about the indirect source review is how the community outside of the city council and the city staff can get us more authority to deal with the pollution at the airport when we have the best opportunity to do it in 2015.
I agree with Ted on everything that he is concerned regarding, other than closing down the airport, until we have an idea of, there's a restricted airspace above the airport that keeps other planes from coming through. Okay, so with that, and once the restriction's gone, the airport's closed, that opens it up for everybody else around to use our airspace. The other one is biofuels, Sherri was touched on that. And the one other concern I have is, you know, in the emergency of, you know, of natural disaster or terrorist attack, what are we going to use to be able to come in and out of here? The other, thank you very much for sharing. The one is, we have 227 acres of land here, and what is the environmental impact, what is it going to become? I think is really a very strong point that everybody's listening for, is what is it going to become once it is closed? So I think that's a very important point. I'd like to hear more of that tonight.